Hey everybody, welcome back. Thank you so much for joining us tonight in our study in the Book of Joshua. I want to just say thank you so much for all of you that have been with us for now the last 20 sessions. And so we are slowly but methodically making our way basically through the entire Bible. So we're having a good time. Hey listen, if you're joining us for the first time, please visit our website. You can download our notes for tonight. Our website is WhitestoneChurchTX.com. WhitestoneChurchTX.com. You can go to the notes section, to the Bible study, the video dropdown section, and you can see Joshua Part 20, and you can download the PDF, download the notes for tonight's Bible study. Also, you can contact us there, send us your email. We'd be happy to put you on our email list and email those to you directly in your drop box each week as we progress. So grab your Bible, grab your notes, grab something to write with. We want this to be an interactive time. So we've done our best to allow you to ask questions, and I'll do my best to try to answer them. On your notes section, there's my email. I'll check my email periodically through the Bible study tonight. Also, down in the post on your, on Facebook, you can post your questions. My beautiful bride is behind the scenes, and she will be looking for your questions. If you have some questions or before, during, or after our study, send them to us. We'll do our best to answer those as much as possible. So grab your Bible. We're gonna go to the Book of Joshua. And we, but we're, well, we're studying the Book of Joshua, but we're gonna go, and tonight, we're gonna specifically talk about the fig tree generation prophesied by Jesus in three of the four Gospels. So in Matthew, Mark, and Luke, when Jesus's disciples take him, or ask him three basic questions, they just ask him, "Hey Jesus, when will you return? When will you, when will the temple be destroyed? And what is the sign, or the, when is the coming of the end of the age?" And so when they ask Jesus these questions, we've been talking a lot about Jesus's response over the last few weeks. And so one of his responses is in this fig tree parable that is listed in three of the four Gospels. So we'll kind of dive in there tonight, but I want to kind of recap the purpose of the Book of Joshua. As you read through the Book of Joshua, it is a story, it is the telling, the history of the Jews, the Israelites, leaving Egypt and wandering in the desert for 40 years. And at the end of that 40 years, Moses, who led them out of Egypt, he dies, and Joshua is now in charge of God's people. And Joshua, along with Caleb, who were two of the 12 spies 40 years previously, when they went into the Promised Land, they saw that the Promised Land was inhabited by giants. They saw that the Promised Land was inhabited by people that were against God's, God's children, that were against the Israelites. So just to recap a little bit, when God promised Abraham the Promised Land some 400 to 500 years before the Book of Joshua, God takes Abraham up, and if you remember the story, he shows him the Promised Land. And then Lot and Abraham, they both go into the Promised Land. Their clans start to grow too large to, you know, to cohabitate. And so remember when, when Lot and Abraham, they kind of choose which part of the Promised Land they're gonna take. When God shows Abram, or Abraham, the Promised Land, Satan at the same time also notices, "Hey, there's something special about this land. This territory is important." And so as we see the wanderings of Abraham, and then Jacob, and then the 12, his 12 sons, when they sell Joseph off to Pharaoh, and, and, or to Egypt, and then Joseph is raised up in Pharaoh's own court and becomes second in charge of Egypt. A drought, a famine comes, Jacob and, and the 11 other brothers come to Egypt. They're saved by Jo- Joseph. We see that the Israelites enter into Egypt on friendly terms in the beginning, but then when a new Pharaoh takes over, they are now enslaved. And so the Israelites are enslaved by Egypt, which is across the sea, or across the river, if you will, from the Promised Land. When God showed Abraham the Promised Land, Satan said, "I don't know what's so special about this land, but if it's God's land for God's chosen people, I'm going to inhabit it." So for over 400 years, he inhabits the Promised Land while the Israelites are slaves in Egypt. When they're delivered by Moses, and then they go and, and they cross the Red Sea, and Pharaoh and his armies are swallowed up, then they disobey, they disobey God, and they wander in the desert for 40 years. Now they're entering into the Promised Land some 400 to 500 years after God mentioned that it was theirs. But when they went into the Promised Land, Joshua has to now battle all the enemy that has been inhabiting the Promised Land. He is now slowly driving out the inhabitants out of the Promised Land. So we see the Battle of Jericho, we see the Battle of Ai, we see all these different territories that Joshua leads the people to conquer. When we get to Joshua Chapter 11, 12, 13, 14, we start to see the names of all of these different clans and tribes and groups of people. Some were huge, some were mighty foes, some were smaller and not such a foe, but nevertheless, they drive them out of the Promised Land. God's chosen people have a chosen promised land. Now, all during the Old Testament, after the Book of Joshua, once they inhabit the Promised Land, then in the rest of the Bible, the rest of the Old Testament, in the books of Ruth, and the books of Samuel, and the books of, of Chronicles, Psalms, Ezekiel, Isaiah, we start to see the journey for 2,000 years in the Old Testament to the cross of Jesus Christ. So the Old Testament, after the Book of Joshua, is basically journaling or, or recording the history of the Israelite people in the Promised Land. So we see stories like David and Goliath, when the Philistine army, who Joshua, you know, a couple hundred years earlier had driven out of the Promised Land, the Philistine army with a giant named Goliath, they decide, "Hey, you know what? We're gonna go and defeat those little Israelite people and take back the land that we used to occupy." So in the story of David and Goliath, we see that the Philistine army is constantly attacking the Jewish people, the Israelites, in their land to try to take them as slaves or take back over their land. In other stories, we see different armies coming in, invading the Israelites, trying to take over, trying to get them to serve their gods, trying to tempt them, lure them away, whether it's through Balaam, or Ahab, and Jezebel, try to lure the Israelites away from their Promised Land and away from their god that delivered them from Egypt. We see the journey as David, who killed Goliath, as he grows up and becomes king of Israel, he decides, "Hey, listen, we're gonna build a temple." Well, God says, "Hey, listen, David, you're not gonna build a temple, but your son Solomon will build a temple." So around the books of Psalm and the Song of Solomon in your Bible, somewhere around 1,000 years before Jesus's birth, we see the temple, God's temple, being built in the Promised Land. Now, this Promised Land is the Promised Land that they're taking over in the Book of Joshua, but they're constantly under siege from foreign forces, foreign powers, that are trying to destroy them and take back the land. So we see when Joshua, when David builds the temple through his son Solomon, Solomon builds the temple, the Jews for the first time are not nomadic. They're, they're no longer nomadic, they're no longer using a, a tabernacle or a temple that they build and will have in this place for a little while, and then they'll move it to this place. They now have a permanent home, they now have a permanent temple. Then we see stories through, through, after, after Solomon and his reign, he's a good king. Then we see Israel, they go through a civil war where Israel splits, the Jewish people kind of, you know, choose the north versus the south. We see like when, in the Book of Daniel, when Daniel, along with Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, we see that the Babylonian army comes in and invades Israel, basically decimates them, takes them all captive for 70 years, enslaves them. That's where we get the story of, of, of Daniel and the lion's den, Shadrach and Meshach and Abednego in the, in the burning furnace. We see that this is Israel as they, as they, as they progressed through the Old Testament. Sometime before Jesus is born, Rome takes over the world. Now Rome comes into Israel, and they have the temple, they have their customs, they have their, their tradition, and Rome doesn't decimate them at this time, but they do conquer them and rule them and enslave them, but they allow Israel to still have its own territory and still have its own religious customs and religious practice, but they're under the dominance of Rome. So then we get to the birth and the life of Jesus Christ. Now, from this point, from the flood to the birth of Christ is about 2,000 years. And from the time of Abraham being told by God, "This is the Promised Land", we see a journey of like 1,700 or 1,800 years post-flood to the cross of Jesus. We see the Old Testament is basically telling us the history of God's people for those 17 years. But the history and the stories and the battles and the conquests and the, and the struggles and the, and the temptations, all focus in and around the Promised Land. And the center, central hub of that is what would later be called, become Jerusalem or the capital city of God's people. So when we get to the birth of Christ, we are now in what's called the Second Temple Period. This is the temple that, that when Solomon built the temple, and then Babylon comes in and invades them and takes them captive, they destroy the temple. They, they, they don't completely tear it down, but they, they do it damage. Well, Herod comes in, Herod rebuilds the temple, and the temple that Herod built about 200 to 300 years before the birth of Christ, when he goes in and basically rebuilds and, and expands on the temple of, of the Jewish people. Not, not, I should have said a few years before the birth of Christ. When Herod comes in and rebuilds the temple, that temple, parts of those temple stones are still standing today. And so this is what we would know as Herod's temple. And Herod is the king of the Jewish people that is alive during the life of Christ. So we see this journey through the Old Testament. It all is around the land, the territory, the people of God. Now, to fast forward to this thing about the fig tree generation, let's go to the birth, death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ was born somewhere around 1 or 2 AD. He dies around 33 to 35 AD. Jesus Christ was about 33 and a half years of age when he died on the cross. Somewhere around 35 AD to 70 AD is where we get books recording like the Book of Acts. A lot of the Gospels are written during these 35 to 40 years or so after the resurrection and ascension of Jesus Christ. So books that Paul wrote, books that Peter wrote, that John wrote, that Luke wrote, these are all written somewhere between 35 and 70-ish, 75 AD. The latest book to be written is the Book of Revelation, written by John, and is written somewhere around 75 AD. So we see that the New Testament is written and recorded within about a 40-year time span, and it's really about the life of Christ and the life of the early church, with the exception of the Book of Revelation. The Book of Revelation is all about your and I's time period, the return of Christ. So at 70 AD, let's pretend that you and I are Jewish people in Jerusalem. It's been 35, 40-ish years that Jesus has, has been alive on the earth, and, and some of us believe in Him, some of us don't. At 70-ish AD, Rome comes in and destroys Jerusalem. They destroy the temple that Solomon originally built, Herod rebuilt. They come in and destroy it. Now Matthew 24, Jesus prophesies this 24 years ahead of time. When he is walking with his Jewish disciples, his 12 disciples, they walk by the temple that Herod built, and this was a marvel. This was a modern day architectural, this was a prized palace, this was a prized temple. This was not just some sticks and stones put together. This was a, a, a great piece of construction that would still, other buildings that Herod built are still standing today. So it gives us a lot of belief that if the temple had not been destroyed, it would still be here, or at least parts of it would still be here. But Jesus with his disciples walks by around 33, 35 AD and says, "Boys, as great as this temple is, every stone that's stacked on top of each other will be destroyed. Every part of this temple will be destroyed." Now, his disciples cannot believe what Jesus just said. It might be similar to you and I walking down, you know, through the midst of New York City today, and, and Jesus saying to us, "Every skyscraper that you see standing, every building that you see standing, the White House, the Pentagon, everything in New York City, everything in Washington DC, everything that we would consider a great monument, those will no longer be standing." We would say, "Well, what's gonna happen to America?" That's what the disciples are saying. "What's gonna happen to Jerusalem? What's gonna happen to us? We're the, we're God's chosen people. You're our king. Where, where, what, what do you mean, we're gonna be destroyed?" So when Jesus says this in, in 35 AD, it happens in 70 AD. 40 years later, Rome comes in, they've had it with the Jews, they destroy Jerusalem. So here's where the fig tree generation comes into play. From 70 AD until 1948, so from 70 AD until 1948, it's called the despora period. The Jews are dispersed around the world. They no longer can call Jerusalem home, they no longer can call the Promised Land Israel their nation. It is now taken by different groups, different nations. So Syria comes in and takes some of it, Jordan takes some of it, Iran, different Middle East, eastern countries come in and divide up the Promised Land. So when we look at the Book of Joshua, and we look in recent history, pre 1948, so just as recent as 1945, which may be very close to some of your birthdays, some of you definitely, your parents were alive in this time. In 1945, Israel did not have a nation, and they did not inhabit the Promised Land. It wasn't until 1948. So from 70 AD until 1948, some 1,800 plus years, the Israelites or the Jewish people are scattered around the world. Hitler, when he starts to annihilate all the Jews that are in Germany, his goal would to, would have been, if he had not been stopped, his goal would have been to eradicate, through genocide, the entire race of Jewish people if he would have gained worldwide dominance. The despora period is the time where Israelite is not in the Promised Land. So when we look at the Promised Land, Israel inhabited the Promised Land for a little more than 1,000 years before the birth of Christ, and then let's just call it about 1,100 years till, till 70 AD, and now they've been back in the Promised Land for less than 100 years. So as a nation, and through biblical time period, Israel has only possessed or inhabited the Promised Land for some 1,200 years of the earth's existence, for over 6,000 years old. So Israel has not inhabited their Promised Land that long when we look back at biblical history. The, the reason I'm saying all this is that this is a buildup to what Jesus says in Matthew 24. This is the importance of the Book of Joshua. It is God's people inhabiting the Promised Land. Now today, in 2020, God's people inhabit the Promised Land. The Jewish people are in Israel, they are in Jerusalem, they inhabit, that is their land given to them in 1948. That was a, a very prophetic moment. Once that happened, now Christ can return. Christ cannot return according to Old Testament biblical prophecy until Israel again was in their homeland, in their Promised Land. So at this point in our world history, in this point in, in the time span of biblical history, Jesus Christ can return. Now, the question that's out there is, what did Jesus mean by the fig tree generation? So let's take our Bibles, let's go to Matthew 24. I just want to read the first three verses, then we'll, then we'll read the parable of the fig tree. The first three verses, "Jesus went out and departed from the temple, and his disciples came to him, showing him the buildings of the temple." Matthew Chapter 24, verse 1. This is not in your notes, I apologize. I did not put these three verses in your notes. Matthew 24, verse 1, it is in your notes, deep in this article, but you can just hear me out on this. "Then Jesus went out and departed from the temple, and his disciples came to him and said, showing him the buildings of the temple, and said, 'Jesus, do you not see all these things? This temple's pretty cool, don't you think, Jesus?' Assuredly, Jesus says, 'I say to you, not one stone shall be left here upon another that will not be thrown down.' Now, as he sat on the Mount of Olives, the disciples came to him privately, saying..." Now, between verse 2 and 3, "Jesus and his disciples walked from the temple through the Kidron Valley, up another mountain to the Mount of Olives." So, so for that 30-minute journey, his disciples have been thinking, "What did Jesus mean that the temple's gonna be destroyed? We, we thought the Messiah was gonna come rescue us, now he's talking about destruction." So they have 30 or 45 minutes or an hour, however long it took them to walk that distance, these disciples are mulling over what Jesus said. Verse 3, "They come to him, as he sat on the Mount of Olives. The disciples came to Jesus privately, saying, 'Hey, listen, tell us, when will these things be? Will what things? Well, when will this, when will this temple be destroyed? Because that's the only thing Jesus has told them yet." See, the disciples aren't referencing something that we can read further because Jesus hadn't said it yet. The only thing Jesus has said so much so far is, "Hey, there's a day coming when the temple will be destroyed, and not one stone will stand upon another." So the disciples, knowing that this is prophetic, knowing that this is in the future, they want to know when that will happen. Now, they know enough about Jesus and his prophecy and his teaching to tie this to the return of Christ, the Messiah. The Jewish people were waiting for a Messiah to raise up a physical army to destroy Rome and other opposition, whether it was Philistines, Assyrians, Babylonians, whoever tried to invade them, they were waiting once and for all for a king that would no longer allow the enemy to come and push in on their territory or their religion. So in verse 3, "Now they sit down, his disciples say, 'Tell us, when will these things be?'" That's the first question. Well, these things are, "When will the temple be destroyed? And what will be the sign of your coming?" Now, I want you to take a highlighter, I want you to circle or underline the word "sign" in your scripture. What will be the sign of your coming? Let me just talk about that real briefly. Signs in scripture indicate movements in the stars, movements in creation. What will be the sign? The, the sign of the birth of Christ was the star that led the disciple, or led the shepherds and led the wise men to Bethlehem, to where Jesus was. That wasn't just a star that showed up one day. They had been through astronomy, through Babylon, in the time of Daniel, in the Book of Daniel. Daniel taught them how to observe the stars. Well, we look at things today like the blood moons and different, different signs in the sky about the return of Christ. What will be the sign of your coming and the end of the age? So those are three questions. When will the temple be destroyed? What will be the sign of your coming? And what will be the end of the age? Now, the coming and the end are two different events, but, but they are prophetic and they indicate the reign of the supreme, of Jesus Christ, their supreme leader, their Messiah, if you will. So Jesus starts to answer them in Chapters 24 and 25. So I want to zero in on his response about the fig tree generation. This is verse 32 in your, in your notes, if you'll turn to page 2. This is Chapter 24, verse 32. I just noticed, I accidentally wrote Chapter 25 in your notes, just change that to 24, verse 32, but it's listed on the second page of your notes. And here is the fig tree generation parable that Jesus shares. And he shares this parable in three of the Gospels. It's recorded in three different Gospels, so we're gonna read two of them. Verse, Chapter 24, verse 32. "From the fig tree learn this lesson. As soon as its branch becomes tender and puts out its leaves, you know that summer is near." So Jesus, in Jesus fashion, says, "Now learn this parable from the fig tree. Now learn this lesson from the fig tree. As soon as its branches become tender and puts out its leaves, you know that summer is near." So also, when you see all these things, you know that He, Jesus, is near at the very gates. "Truly I say to you, this generation will not pass away until all these things take place. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will not pass away." Let's look at one more reference. It's, it's also mentioned in the Book of Mark, but let's go to Luke Chapter 21, because we'll zero in on Luke's recording of this fig tree generation. Luke Chapter 21, verse 29, it's on the third page of your notes at the bottom. It's Luke Chapter 21, the parable of the fig tree generation. So while you're turning there, let me say this. "The disciples say, 'Hey, Jesus, when will you return? What will be the sign of your coming?' Well, Jesus says, 'Hey, listen, church, Whitestone Church, everybody listening in 2020, learn this lesson from the fig tree.'" Now, when Jesus says, "Learn this lesson from the, from the fig tree", I don't think he meant go outside in your backyard, if you have one, or to the local, you know, nursery and watch a fig tree. I think we can do that and learn some lessons from the physical plant. But he says, "Learn this lesson from the fig tree." Now, the fig tree, we have to ask, what does the fig tree represent? On the next page of your notes, there's a great article by a guy named Michael Hile. I just put this in your notes, he's, he's connected with khouse.org, which is Chuck Missler's ministry. It goes into pretty, it's, it's a really good detailed article you could read about the fig tree generation. But when Jesus says, "Learn this parable of the fig tree", we have to then go into our Bibles and learn about fig trees. What do fig trees represent? What does he mean by the fig tree? Does he just want us to learn some, you know, agricultural, you know, lessons of, of creation about trees? No, the fig tree represents Israel, the people, the nation. The fig tree mentioned in this, in this parable is representative of the nation, Israel. So he says, "Hey, listen, learn this parable, this lesson of the fig tree." In other words, watch Israel, learn what Israel is doing, learn, learn what is happening to Israel, and that will give you insight on when the return of Christ is. Now, Israel is one of the smallest nations in the world. It is definitely the smallest nation by all of its surrounding neighbors in the Middle East. It is a minute dot on the map, if you will, but it is the most strategic territory on planet earth. The Pentagon is not, the White House is not. Israel is the most strategic territory on earth. All languages point to Israel. So all languages in the West, right, left to right, all languages in the East, right, right to left, Everything points to Israel, Israel, there's a ton of, of, of evidence that Israel is the center point of the, of the world. Many scholars believe Israel is where the Garden of Eden is. Uh, it is, it is the territory that is God's place. This is where God chose to give his Israelites, his Jewish people, the promised land. Now, in this parable of the fig tree, we learn. That the fig tree represents Israel. Now, in nineteen forty-eight, so if you write on your paper nineteen forty-eight, Israel becomes a nation. Now, the prophecy spoken of all through the Old Testament has to do, May fourteenth nineteen forty-eight. Has to do with uh Israel becoming a nation, coming back, the desporah is over, the. The, the scattering is over, now they, they come back to be one people. Jesus says this, he says, learn this lesson, when this nation begins to shoot out, when it starts to sprout. When it starts to bud, when it starts to, to show signs of production or producing. You know that a certain season is approaching, summer season, and the summer season is a season for judgment and. Uh, in, in the Bible, but, but we know that when it, when it sprouts out its, its leaves and its, and its branches. That something's about to happen. Let's look at Luke twenty-one, cuz I want us to talk about different nations tonight. Luke twenty-one, verse twenty-nine, the same parable, but Jesus puts something in this. Book, par, uh, in this recording that he doesn't put in others. So Luke chapter twenty-one, verse twenty-nine, then he spoke the parable to them. Look at the fig tree, singular, and all the trees. Now, that statement is only in Luke's recording, it's not in Matthew and it's not in Marx. But in Luke, he says, don't, you know, look at the fig tree, Israel, but also look at the other nations. That is, that is, that is large, because the other nations are represented by trees. He says, when they are already budding, you see and know for yourselves that summer is now near. So you also, when you see these things happening, know that the kingdom of God is near. When you see these things start to happen, you know that the kingdom of God is near. Assuredly, I say to you, this generation will by no means pass away. Till all these things have taken place. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will by no means pass, by no means pass away. When Jesus says this, he says that this generation will not pass without seeing. What happens to this fig tree. Now, the debate, and that's what this article in your notes is about, the debate is, what is the timeframe of a generation? Is a generation considered forty years? As we're reading through the book of Joshua, they wander in the desert for forty years. Well, just those people die in that forty years, but Joshua and Caleb both live well, more than forty years. So is a generation limited to forty years? In Psalms, the psalmist David writes about a generation being seventy or eighty years. Is a generation limited to seventy or eighty years in the Bible? Is a generation limited to uh a, a specific number? Or is it reference to an age or a time period? That's what that article's about, I don't wanna dive into that debate tonight, but I do wanna say, you, say this to you. That in nineteen forty-eight, Israel became a nation. In our lifetime, in our, whether we're that old or not, we, we live in a timeframe where Israel is now a nation. In the, in nineteen sixty-seven, Israel regains Jerusalem. So in six, in the war of sixty-seven, the Six-Day War, when Israel goes to battle against Egypt and, and the Assyrians. And they try to take back the land, uh, that. From night, in sixty-seven, when they go and they take back Jerusalem, then the nation is intact. So some people believe that the timeframe starts at forty-eight or sixty-seven. And then within seventy or eighty years, Jesus has to return. Now, before we start to put a date on the return of Christ, let's look at another date and let's look at some different nations. So, let's go all the way back to Genesis, chapter uh one, when God creates the world. How many days did God work, and on what day did God rest? The Bible says it took God six days to create the world. Now, biblically, that's six twenty-four hour days. Despite what evolution says, despite what the world says, the Bible says God created this world in one week. And on the seventh day, he rested. God gave Adam that exact same week and said, hey, Adam, you worked for six days. And on the seventh day, you rest, now this is gonna get deep right now, when I'm fixing to say, this is prophetic. God says, Adam, you worked for six days, and on the seventh day, rest. Now, there are two other verses in the Bible, one's in Psalms, one's in Second Peter. Uh, three eight, where it says that a day is of a thousand years, and a thousand years is as of a day unto the Lord. Now, we have abused those two verses in the realm of evolution. To try and appease evolution, which is a lie from the pit of hell. That is indoctrination of the enemy to get us to not believe our bibles, just on a bumper sticker. The, the, the focus on these two verses for all of our lives has been, well. God told us right there that he didn't really create the world in six days. Cuz a day is of a thousand years, and a thousand years is of a day unto the Lord. The only time that we take that verse and apply it to physical time. Is in creation week to try to appease an old earth that's a billion years old plus, or sixty-five million trillion, whatever. We never, we never say, well, you know, Noah wasn't really on the boat for forty days and forty nights, you know, if that. He was probably on the boat for forty thousand years, cuz a day is of a thousand years and it. Or, you know, we'll say, well, Jesus wasn't really in the tomb for three days, he was probably in the tomb for three thousand years before he rose. See, we, we never take that verse and apply it to other times in the Bible, so we can't apply it to creation. What God is giving us is a prophetic insight. He's saying, hey, listen. As I gave Adam a work week of six days. I'm giving mankind a work week of six thousand years. Now, this is how we can back this up, on the seventh day, God rested. What is the seventh thousand-year reign of Christ? It's called the millennium, and that is the thousand-year reign of Jesus Christ on earth as the king. From Jerusalem, fulfilling the prophecies that the king will come and set up his kingdom. In the physical realm on this earth for a thousand-year term. That will be a day in history, a day in time of rest. So when we see this reference of six thousand years. Biblically, it's been six thousand years since the birth of the world. Since creation, God creates Adam and Eve. They live in the garden approximately, they could have been there about eighty-five years before they sinned. There's about two thousand years from creation to Noah's flood. There is about two thousand years from the flood to the birth of Christ. And it is about two thousand years from the birth of Christ, or the death of Christ, until twenty-twenty. Now, that is six thousand years. We are closing in very dr- drastically, very quickly. We are closing in on the finality of the sixth day of the world's existence. Meaning the sixth thousandth year. That in align with Jerusalem, or Israel, I'm sorry, becoming a nation in nineteen forty-eight. If you take the word generation, from forty-eight to twenty-twenty-eight is eighty years. Now, some people believe, hey, Jesus is gonna return before the year twenty-twenty-eight. I'm not ready to put a date on it like that, but I am telling you, we've got to learn the lesson of the parable of the fig tree. Not because we want to, but because Jesus tells us to. And he tells us, what will be the sign of your coming? Well, Acts two says, in the last days, the moon will turn to blood. Well, we've been through in recent, in the last five years, blood moons. We've seen signs in the sky, we see signs in governmental movings. We see signs in biblical timing that the return of Christ is coming very quickly. Because the sixth day of the world is about up. The, uh, um, and the generation from the birth of Israel is about up. Now, for those of us that would love a twenty-twenty-eight date, we have to take into consideration. That Israel was, was, was returned in sixty-seven. Regardless if it's in eight years or twenty-eight years, the return of Christ is imminent, and it is coming very, very quickly. Now, what else can we look to? In Luke twenty-one, it says, look to the fig tree and other trees. If the fig tree represents Israel, what do the other trees represent? Well, in the book of Joshua, Israel is conquering and pushing out the enemy. That's constantly trying to take their land and territory. So when we look at the book of Israel, and we compare that to the book of Revelation. This is in-time connection. The book of Revelation is the spiritual takeover of the world. God is taking over your heart, he's pushing out the enemy, he's conquering strongholds that are in your life. And he is bringing his truth to his promised land, which is us, we are the promised land of God, we are the temple now. God doesn't need to build a temple, uh, in a physical city to be worshiped in. He doesn't need us to sacrifice bulls and rams in a physical building and talk to a physical priest and confess our sins. He says, come to me, if you're heavy laden and weary, and I'll give you rest. He didn't say, go to the priest, or go to the temple, or go to White Stone Church on Sunday at eleven, uh, he said, come to me. And he says, you are the temple of Christ, so we're the promised land. But the physical territory of, of Israel today is still the promised land of God. When Jesus returns and builds his physical kingdom on earth, he will do it in his promised land. Wherever he has already preordained his temple to be erected. Which may or may not be where the Temple Mount is today, regardless, it will be in Jerusalem. The fig tree generation, when it says other trees, what are those other trees? Well, all through scripture, we see other nations that are mentioned all through the Old Testament. They're not godly nations, but they are other nations, they're other trees. So if the fig tree represents Israel, other trees represent other nations. There's a great li- woman of God named Billy Brim out of Branson, Missouri. Uh, she does a great teaching on this, so if you look up Billy Brim. Uh, you will, you will be, you know, there's a lot of good stuff that goes a whole lot more. Uh, uh, in depth than I can go, but here's other nations in, in your Old Testament. You have nations such as Jordan, Damascus, Syria. Do any of those sound like they're still around today? All three of those are. You have Babylon, you have, um, Lebanon, you have Europe, you have Russia, they're under different names. You have Iraq, you have Iran. Iran in the Old Testament is known as Persia or Elam, E-L-A-M. So when it talks about Persia, it's talking about Iran. Iran is mentioned for over four thousand years of biblical history in our Old Testament. These are the other trees. So what Jesus is saying is saying, hey, listen, twenty-twenty, pay attention to Israel. Pay attention to Syria, which is right on the border. Who invaded Israel in sixty-seven? Assyria. Who joined them? Egypt. Who wanted their heads? Who wanted their land? Who wanted their territory? Iraq, Iran. Where is Babel built? Where is Babylon today in Iran? Where are Iraq? What, what is happening in the Middle East? It is time that we pay attention to these other trees. Because as these other trees start to move, they are moving in a united force. Saudi Arabia, the Saudi Arabia is, is one of these nations. Uh, when you, when you hear words like the United Arab Emirates, this is a unity, this is a unifying of other nations. That all have on the, on the underbelly surface of their agenda is to take over the promised land. They want back the territory that the, that Joshua and the Israelites drove them out of. Almost four thousand years ago. Why do they want it today? Because Satan wants it. Why does Satan want it? He wants it for the same reason he wanted it when God told Abraham, this is your land. Because he's trying to thwart, or disturb, or disrupt. God's people, God's plan, God's kingdom from ever being built. Jesus Christ is going to come and deliver Israel of their unbelief. When Jesus Christ comes and he reveals himself through, through, uh, the two witnesses at the wailing wall. When he reveals himself, when the Antichrist breaks his agreement in the last week or the last seven years, called the tribulation. In that breaking in the middle, Jesus Christ will, will bring a great mass of Israelites to him. Jewish people will get saved by the millions. And Jesus Christ will build his temple there. What is Satan trying to do today? These other tree nations, when you look at Syria, you look at Iran, you look at Iraq, you look at Egypt, you look at. All of the Middle East countries, they're unified by their Muslim belief, by their religion. And they have a intense hatred for Israel and God's chosen people. They want to destroy them. There is no reason why militarily, they haven't done it yet. Except supernaturally, God has protected Israel all these years and will continue to protect Israel. One of the jokes that I have with my wife is, like, when we say, hey, you know, let's go visit Israel, cuz that's on our bucket list to go to Israel one day. Every now and then, one of the two of us have said, oh, man, there's a lot of craziness going on in that part of the world. Listen, the safest place to ever travel is Israel, because it won't suffer any kind of, of, of invasion. Until the, uh, until Jesus Christ says so in the tribulation. It, uh, one nation that's gonna be protected till the return of Christ is, is Israel. Uh, because that's biblical prophecy, i- it's more dangerous to go to, to Mexico than Israel. So, so, so God i- in this study in Joshua, is showing us how the enemy was driven out. The book of Revelation is showing us how the enemy is trying to regain access. When you got saved, you are the promised land. So, so, so here, here, here's Joshua, the book, uh, in your personal life. You were born, and, 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 and in the case of my life, my grandpa, uh, when I was six weeks old. I was in an incubator and had a bunch of physical problems. Uh, and so had to be like, you know, in, in the bubble tube or whatever. And through the glass, through the tube, my grandfather confessed out of his mouth. That I would not die, but that I would be a preacher, that's my preacher boy. Well, that was prophetic. Just as God says to Abraham, hey, this is your promised land. Well, Satan heard God and tried to invade the promised land and prevent God's people from, from living there. Well, the enemy heard my grandfather and says, oh, okay, well, then I'm gonna target that boy and try to destroy him. Well, God's plan will always prevail in your life. So when I got saved, it was God possessing the promised land. So now that the enemy's been kicked out, what is the enemy trying to do? He's trying to get back in. Once you got saved, the enemy's driven out. What's the enemy trying to do? Get back in, greed come back in, fear come back in. Perversion come back in, whatever those things are, he's trying to come back in to disrupt. God's plan for your promised land. That's a, that's a micro picture of the macro, uh, thing that's happening on planet earth. So as we study the book of Joshua, is this fig tr- tree generation is part of it. Now, the fig tree generation, if Israel was established in forty-eight, which it was. In eighty years is a generation, what some of our problems are is that we're looking at the generation of people. And maybe not the generation of the nation. What some of our problems are is that we're looking at the generation of people and maybe not the generation of the nation. So God may be saying to us. Don't necessarily try to figure out when I'm gonna return, watch what's happening in the Middle East. As we're in time of election and we're in time of a recount of an election, if you will, and. And uh, and it's still up, you know, it's still under contest of, of who are, who our president will be. Uh come, you know, January twentieth, but, but no matter what happens in America. America must always align itself with Israel. We must always be on the side of Israel because that is God's chosen promised territory. So as a nation, historically, we have always protected and been an ally. Uh regardless of some presidents' attempts or some, you know, groups' attempts to, to break us away from Israel. It is necessary that we protect and watch Israel. As normal citizens who may not have all the military uh intel and all the. All the knowings of behind the scenes that, that the Pentagon or the president may have. We have to watch what's happening in Israel, we have to watch these other nations. Let me read Luke uh twenty-one one more time, and I want you to read it. And instead of saying fig tree or trees, I'm gonna use the word nation or Israel. Then Jesus spoke a parable to them, it says, look at the nation Israel, the fig tree. And all the trees. Look at Syria, look at Iran, Iraq, Jordan. Look at Egypt, look at Russia, look at America, look at Europe. Look at Iran, look at Persia, look at all the trees. What will the Antichrist do? The Antichrist will establish a one world government. Now, he will divide the world into ten regions or ten governments. He will rule them, but there'll be ten under, under kings, if you will, under, under rulers. We have to start looking at that. Are we paying attention to what happens in the UN? Are we paying attention to what? Uh peace treaties are being signed and what, what deals are being made? Um, all the trees repre- that word trees represents nations, other nations, goat nations. Jesus says, I'll separate the sheep nations from the goat nations. Let's, let's realize he's talking about real entities, real governments, real nations, kingdoms. When they are already budding. When they are already budding, you see and know for yourselves that summer is now near. When you see the lines being drawn, when you see sides being chosen. You know, when you see them shooting out, when you see their agendas being revealed. When you see their produce coming, Jesus says, you judge a tree by its fruit. So, so is a nation aligning with Israel, which would be good fruit? Or is a nation aligning against Israel, bad fruit? Is the church aligning with Israel, good fruit? Or are we believing replacement theology that says, God's done with Israel, he just loves Christians now? Bad fruit. God's saying, listen, watch what happens to the fig tree. Watch what happens to other nations. Watch what happens to America, America, you must align with the fig tree. Otherwise, you'll be considered uh the other tree. So you, verse thirty-one, Luke chapter twenty-one, verse thirty-one. So you also, when you see these things happening, know that the kingdom of God is near. Know that the return of Christ is coming. Now, so much of this has to do with the seven year tribulation period. But so much of it has to do with twenty twenty right now. Please don't read this and go, oh, well, it'll be obvious when the Antichrist shows up. If we can't see now. That it's obvious. Do we think that our vision will be not deceived when the Antichrist shows up? Let me try to say it like this. How much more perversion do we need to see before we call it sin? Like, like, did it, what, what's it gonna take? For us to say, you know what, I'm gonna cancel Netflix because of the movies they're showing. Well, we should have canceled Netflix ten years ago from the movies they've been showing. But then it takes this new TV series that everybody's going, oh, I'm canceling Netflix, and we should. But look at how deceived we've been. Why didn't we cancel it a long time before? Because there's been a ton of trash on there anyways. If we look and say, you know, well, I won't be deceived when the Antichrist comes on the scene. That's not true, because Jesus says the Antichrist will be the best deceiver the world's ever known. And we don't know we're deceived until we've been deceived. We don't, we don't go in and buy the bad car, the used car from the bad used car salesman. We don't knowingly buy the one with duct taped mufflers and duct taped. Engine parts all, you know, we don't know that, we don't, we're deceived and we buy it. And then two weeks later, we discover it. So, when, when, when he says, choose which side, we've gotta choose today, there's plenty of evidence today. To see nations mounting and picking their sides. Verse thirty-one, so you also, when you see these things happening, know that the kingdom is near. Assuredly I say to you, this generation will by no means pass away till all things take place. What generation? What generation? The fig tree generation. Is that you and I, I think there's strong biblical evidence that, that it is. I believe that the world is approaching its six thousand year end of the sixth day. I believe the thousand year millennium is coming. I believe that, that Israel has been a nation since nineteen forty-eight. I believe that biblically, generations are, are somewhere in a, in a uh human. Timeframe of eighty-ish years, so I'm not a guy that's gonna tell you, hey, June the second. Twenty twenty-eight, Jesus is returning, that's, that's unbiblical, that's not, that's not the point. The point is, what if we lived our life as if Jesus was gonna return in seven or eight years? What if we lived our life as if Jesus was gonna return in the next twenty years? What if we lived our life as if Jesus returned by twenty forty-seven? Whether you believe that, that Israel is a nation in forty-eight or sixty-seven. The year twenty forty-seven is eighty years from either one of those. And, or, or within, you know, it, it, it's, you've already exceeded or, or hit your eighty year mark. My point is this, without trying to pinpoint exact day or time. What if we just lived our lives as if the return of Christ was imminent? Because here's what's gonna happen. At the Battle of Armageddon, when the Antichrist mounts his army to fight against Jesus. It will be a battle because Jesus is bringing in the millennial age. He's bringing in the, the thousand year reign of Christ. He's gonna bring in a thousand year reign where Jesus brings peace and rest to the earth. Satan, in the last seven years of the sixth day, the last seven years. Of the six thousand years of man. In the last seven years, Satan is going to mount his attack to prevent. The millennial reign of Christ. Israel is in the center of it all. Israel will follow the Antichrist for three and a half years. The Jewish people that aren't following Jesus, the nation of Israel. Their congress, their senators, their, their presidents, their politicians, their educational systems, their military leaders. They will love the Antichrist for three and a half years. And it will be the approach of the last three and a half years that the Antichrist breaks his deal with Israel. And the fig tree nation, the fig tree nation of Israel will discover. That they were eating bad fruit. They'll turn to Jesus Christ. And there will be huge suffering on the earth during that time. But Jesus Christ will bring in the millennial reign, the seventh year, the seventh. Thousand year reign of, on, on earth, and it will bring peace. This fig tree generation is a parable, Jesus says, learn the lesson. Learn the lesson of the fig tree and the other trees. Let's learn this parable, let's figure this thing out, because the return of Christ is imminent. Joshua was driving the enemy out. Revelation is the enemy trying to drive back in. That's why this book spans the entire Bible. If you have any questions, uh I'll take them now, I'll look online. Uh I'm looking in my inbox, do we have any posted uh on our, on our feed?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining us. If you have questions, send them to me, I'll do my best to, to answer them uh on or off the air. Uh but we love you guys, thank you so much for joining us. Um and uh we'll be with you again next week, six thirty Tuesday night. Hey, listen, pray for a fair election, pray for our president. Pray for our, uh, our political leaders, that God will unite us, not. Uh that division will not be allowed to invade our land. Invade the, invade the land of America. Okay, we got one question coming through.
Um, so it's from Malene Smock and it says, uh wait a minute, Israel will follow for three years the Antichrist?
So in the seven year tribulation, the, the seven year tribulation, regardless of when that starts or when that comes. The Antichrist will be the world's most slick politician. The best military leader, financier, ec- econo- uh economist. Uh he will, he will excel in all areas. That um, that we uh desire, those are called the seven mountains, the seven mountains of influence. Uh he will be the world's best leader that mankind has seen that do not know Jesus Christ. Uh during that time, he will bring peace between the Middle East and um Israel. So he will bring peace between Syria, Iran, Iraq, Jordan, the West Bank, Golan Heights, all these. Uh areas, these territories, he'll bring a peace between Israel and, and those other nations. That will be a peace that will be false and, and um. Uh you know, superficial. At the three and a half year mark, he will claim to be God, he will claim to be the Messiah, he will claim deity. And he will demand the worship of all the Jews. The Jewish people will have rebuilt their temple. They will be sacrificing animals in their temple, they will be uh practicing Judaism. They um. They, they uh, uh, I'm sorry. They uh will be practicing Judaism. The Antichrist will come in and, and disrupt that by what Daniel calls the abomination of desolation. Uh some people believe that sacrificing the pig on the altar. Um I, I, I'm not convinced of that, it will be him claiming to be the Messiah. Um there is, uh so th- then the last three and a half years will be all out slaughter against. Uh the Jewish people, uh the world will turn and try to destroy every Jew on the planet. Uh take over the promised land. God will bring great judgment through different uh seals and trumpets and bowls of judgment. Uh and that is what's called the tribulation. At the end of that seven years, Jesus Christ will return and destroy the Antichrist, destroy Satan and his minions. Uh put them into the pit of hell, uh the lake of fire and establish his millennial reign, the thousand year reign. Uh the second question, does the Antichrist have to be a man? Is that the question? Um no, it's a great question, uh I don't wanna call him out, but my friend Debbie. Uh the other day, who's a mighty woman of God, we're talking. Um and uh there's a lot of uh thought process that uh the Antichrist um could be Jewish. Uh the Antichrist could be a female, um I think it will probably be a man personally. Uh not because I'm a sexist, but because um, um. I just believe he's gonna mimic himself as Jesus, who was a man. Uh so personally, I think the Antichrist will be a male, uh but I will not be surprised if he's a Jewish male. Uh or a male that claims to be um of lineage of Jesus Christ. Um he'll try somehow to thwart that um and, and make himself to come from Abraham. Uh somewhere following the lineage of either um Isaac or Ishmael. Uh those are just personal thoughts, really nothing, nothing there, so. Hey, God bless you, thank you so much for joining us, we'll see you next Tuesday, six thirty, thank you.